Good afternoon, board members, administration, faculty, staff, and visitors. The time is six twenty on this eighteenth day of October twenty twenty-third, and I call this meeting of the Laredo College Board of Trustees to order. Mr. Delgado, can you do the prayer, and Mr. Ryan, can you do the pledge of allegiance? Please stand.
Loving and gracious God, you are indeed the giver of all good gifts, and we thank you today for all of your blessings, for the successful outcomes of our college events, and for all of our faculty, our staff, and our students. We ask that you bless them abundantly as we continue to seek your wisdom, guidance, courage, and strength. Be with us in our deliberations and help us to be wise in the decisions we make for the good of all those who have placed their trust and confidence in our leadership. Give us the insight to lead with integrity so that our decisions reflect what is right and what is good. Dear Lord, grant us the humility to always seek your will in all that we do and all that we say. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the God in which I stand and deliver the word of my worship.
Thank you, gentlemen. Mr. Delgado, can you do roll call for us, please?
Lupita Cepeda?
Present.
Jorge Delgado, present. Jackie Lemon Ramos?
Absent.
Oh, he's gone.
Eric Benavides Garcia?
Absent.
Sinri Yendo?
Present.
Merculio Martinez Jr., absent. Mr. Seman Angel?
Present.
Karina Elizondo, absent. Tita Cantubella?
Here.
You have a quorum here.
Thank you.
Madam, may I say something beautiful?
Yes.
I want to apologize to the staff and to my colleagues for being late. I had a board meeting for Laredo Independent School District, and I had a couple items that I had to present to the board, so I do apologize for being a bit late. I don't mean to keep everybody late, so I'm really sorry to my colleagues and staff. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and that notice of the meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Do we have any public testimony? Sorry. Next item is number three, is approval of the minutes of the regular board meeting of September twenty-first, twenty twenty-third.
Motion approved.
Second. So I have a motion by Mr. Ryan, I have a second by Mr. Delgado. Any discussion? Non-heard? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next. Thank you, Jackie. The next item is recognition, introductions of personnel, and new personnel actions for the month. Five A S T A S B Risk Management Fund Excellence Award, Dr. David Adesola.
Good evening, members of the board. Dr. Magiera, colleague, David Adesola, vice president of the compliance and risk management for the record. I have with me...
Good evening, Cassandra Salinas, safety and risk manager.
So, over the course of twenty-two and twenty-three, the safety and risk management division, coupled with campus police, we conducted some trainings for employees and students. And I apologize if this was a little bit unhearsed, actually. We were supposed to have somebody from Patsy come in and present the award, but they were unable to make it tonight. There's like a discount hiring, I'm afraid, isn't it, Pam? But, um, as part of that training, it was an eight-hour long training, and we go through with employees how to use an AED in case of emergency, a defibrillator, how to use a stop and bleed kit, perform basic CPR and basic first aid. We also include how to use a fire extinguisher in case of a fire. So that comprises the first four hours of the training. Take a lunch break, and then the second four hours of the training was all active shooter active threat training. So we, in, you know, between August and, you know, around February, we did this training for about a hundred and fifty, close to two hundred employees. We also did the training for students. We trained about fifty to a hundred students on this all-day activity. And we submitted, we nominated ourselves for this award, and we described exactly what we did, and... And TASB was pleased with what we, what we were doing, and as a result, we were giving the TASB Risk Management Excellence Award, which comes with a thousand dollar honorary to purchase more safety supplies.
So this training is, is to ultimately prepare our faculty, staff, and students, and we open it up to the community as well, just preparedness, this training can be effective at home and here and here at work.
We had paused the trainings a little bit because of the transition, we have a new chief, a new safety and risk manager, but we are going to continue, in fact, the next one we have will be Friday, October twenty-seventh. We'll be training all the advising staff for our whole day. And we usually do those operations, depending, we work with the department sometimes, so we'll break it up into two sessions, and they feel like one eight-hour day is too much, but so we'll kind of customize depending on what the needs of the department. But that's, thank you very much for your time.
Congratulations.
Maybe that's an opportunity, I hope.
That's great, thank you.
Congratulations.
The next item is five B, Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty-Third Citizenship and Integration Grant Program Award, Miss Sandra Cortez.
Good afternoon, board members, Dr. Ramírez, colleagues. My name is Sandra Cortez, and I'm Dean of Community Education, and I'm here to inform you today that the Community Education Division has been awarded the Citizenship Instruction and Naturalization Application Services Grant for years twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-five. This award is worth three hundred thousand dollars, and we will serve two hundred and fifty applicants with these funds. If you all recall, we were previously awarded two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for years twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-three. That one has completed, we had to reapply, we had to compete for it, and we were awarded it again for this. During twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-three, the goal was two hundred applicants, but we served approximately three hundred, of which two hundred and sixty have become US citizens, and we still have some individuals in the pipeline waiting to test. If you all also recall that we had a small group, just a very small percentage of individuals that came in to get presented to you all. So we're very, very excited that we were granted this award again. The goal is a little bit higher, but we have no doubt that we'll be able to comply with the, with the deliverables. And I would like to acknowledge Eduardo Martinez, which is standing here with me. He is the program manager for this grant, and Gabe Lozano, and grants director, and Susana Carrion, the restricted grants manager for their assistance in complying this grant, because it is a process that we have to go through. And also, we are very, very grateful for your constant support and for everything that we do to benefit our community. Thank you.
It's wonderful, congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
The next item is five C, Hispanic Association of Colleges and Universities Mid-Level Leadership Program, Dr. Minita Ramírez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It is a great privilege for us to announce, we actually submitted the two names to HACU for one faculty member and one staff member to be mid-level in, well, they call mid-level leadership program interns. And both of them were accepted into the program. It's a six-month program, and they have several opportunities to, to attend different HACU events. And we're very proud of the selection that was made. You know, sometimes you apply to these things, and you never know if you're going to get selected. And recently, we've had a lot, a lot getting our, our employees selected for different programs, from the coordinating board to internships like this in Washington DC that, that will help our team grow and develop. And so I'd like to introduce both of our candidates. Renee Montemayor, who is a chair and English faculty, I don't know if Renee is here. I haven't seen him, and Mr. Julio Reyes, who is our director for dual credit and recruitment. And so both of them will be attending the HACU conference this October. They're taking twenty students with them to the conference. The students will participate in the executive leaders, the student executive leadership program. And then they've got two other opportunities to work with other leaders from other institutions that are Hispanic serving. And so we're very proud of both of them. Julio, I think you're in the audience, and you'll stand to be recognized. We've had one more already that we'll bring next month, once we get the official notice through the coordinating board on, on the faculty side. But we've had some incredible opportunities for our faculty and our staff this last, in these last fifteen months. And so we brought, I think, all of them to you already, except the most recent ones. And so this is the most recent one. The conference is at the end of October, right, for the twenty-seventh? And, and so they're, the students are super excited about going. So, and many of them applied for the scholarship as well, and so their hotel is covered while they're in Chicago. This, this particular conference is going to be in Chicago. And so for most of our students, they've never been to Chicago. And so this is going to be a huge learning experience for all of them. And so we want to congratulate them, and thank you all for the opportunity for helping our employees continue to grow and develop. Good luck, Julio.
Excuse me, thank you.
All right, we'll move on to agenda item number five D, Excellence in Education Twenty Twenty-Three Invitational Call, governing, Dr. Minita Ramírez.
Thank you, yes, sir. This was another program, Excellence in Education has been around a very long time. Like HACU, they work to, to help develop Hispanic leaders in our country and actually around the world. And so there, we had the opportunity to nominate three people to get selected for their, their program, and all three were also selected. And so our three candidates were Dr. Oracio Salinas, Julie Kelly, and Dr. Diana Ortiz. And I think Dr. Ortiz is going to give a quick rundown, Dr. Salinas? And if you want to join her, to talk a little bit about what they experienced at their conference. They already went, they came back. And so the future looks very bright for a partnership between Laredo College and Excellence in Education.
Good evening, and thank you, board, for happiness. Dr. Diana Ortiz, Vice President of Institutional Advancement, along with...
Good evening, board members, Dr. Ramírez, colleagues, Oracio Salinas, Dean of Arts and Sciences.
So what Dr. Ramírez is saying about the celebration of excellence was really, really an amazing opportunity. This event is actually, was actually supported by the Congressional Hispanic Caucus, and they teamed up with Excellence in Education. And the goal of this, this actual entity is to promote Latinos throughout the entire United States. And it was an amazing opportunity for me, as the Vice President of Institutional Advancement. I believe for Dr. Salinas, in terms of networking with faculty, and for Julie as well, to be able to see what other institutions were doing. One of the great things and takeaways from the event was to realize that there is a seal that you can apply for. It's, it's an extremely rigorous seal to apply for that is three years, and this national certification for colleges and universities demonstrate positive momentum in serving the Latino community. And so what happens, it's an extremely, extremely rigorous process that requires the entire institution. But once you apply for this seal, which would be in March, if we're interested in doing something like that and, and committing to it as a college, and if we get accepted into this rigorous process, many government entities and foundations, large foundations, the Bill Gates Foundation, the Lumina Foundation are, once you have the seal, they are now supporting institutions, colleges and institutions to get additional funding, because what was happening in the past, I believe, is colleges and universities might say that they were in fact supporting Latinos in education, but really weren't in terms of, they had maybe one part, but in terms of the graduation and retention, that was not there. So this seal certifies that you've gone through the rigorous process. It's only a three-year award that they give you, and then you need to reapply. And many colleges and universities, university presidents were there, and the individuals that got recognized were highly, highly, highly credible in all the efforts that they were doing to promote Latino education. So we're hoping, and we will present in the future, maybe considering applying for this seal if all areas of the college, enrollment management, the workforce development teams, the community workforce, and faculty all align in meeting this process. So it was an incredible opportunity. I'll let Dr. Salinas say a few words and just know that one of the things that stood out as they talked about their statistics, because this is a statistics-driven entity. They said Latino faculty representation at SEAL-certified institutions have three times, are three times higher when you are SEAL-certified than the all institutions that are not. Another thing that is stated is that among SEAL-certified institutions, undergraduates having, undergraduates have a higher retention rate than students in all institutions. So by having this seal and going through this program, you end up meeting that. And then, of course, undergraduates are more likely to receive Pell Grants and less likely to receive federal student loans for total grant aid. So they are really, really applying a lot of great things. So it was wonderful, and thank you.
Yeah, just quickly, I think that we have the infrastructure to make this work. We have been working on pathways the last six, seven years, and we really are tightening that up. We have the infrastructure, it's just a matter of now being more intentional on it from top to bottom. And in the end, it's all about student success, and in the end, it's all about outcomes. So it aligns beautifully with the state plan, with our mission, and I think we should do it. It was an eye-opener for us, and I think it's been a great opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you both very much.
Congratulations.
All right, we'll move on to agenda item five E, introduction of personnel, personnel actions, Dr. Minita Ramírez.
Thank you, Mr. Delgado. Today, we have two, two people to, to reintroduce to you all. One is a reassignment from Physical Plant, to a general technician is his new title, Jose G. Valdez, many of you do know him as Lupe. Lupe is now assigned to the commander's house, the chapel, the president's office. The, so he is, we're very grateful to him because he does everything. And so thank you, Lupe, for everything you've done, and already, he was already doing that. And so we were able to, we're max, we're trying to maximize the, the support in Physical Plant, and certainly, this has been an incredible addition to the president's office. Come forward to the front of the, please. And a promotion for a property inventory specialist, Jose R. Rodriguez. Joe, where are you? Come on up, Joe. Joe has been part of the team. He's been part of the team that's been doing the inventory and relocation of all of the great gifts that we received from the Salinas Trust. And so he's been diligently working on that, on that task, and, and it's been certainly a labor of love. So we'd like to take a picture with you all, please. You all, step forward.
All right, thank you very much, Dr. Minita Ramírez. We'll move on to agenda item number six, which is the Faculty Senate Report, Ms. Julianne Kelly. She is out. Okay, so we'll report for the Faculty Senate. We'll move on to agenda item number seven, Laredo College Student Government Association Report. Welcome the new president for the year, Ms. Ana Quisela Gigi Pérez Alaman.
Good evening, Madam President, Mr. Sepeda, board members, Dr. Ramírez, administration, staff, and guests. My name is Carolina Castillo Jr., associate vice president, contributing life and engagement, for the record. And this evening is my pleasure to introduce you to the new ASO, or student government, president for the year of twenty-three, twenty-four. This year, we had over four hundred students vote in a very, very tight race for our new student body president. And in September the twenty-second, students came together and elected Ms. Ana Quisela Pérez Alaman, or better known as Gigi for her peers and her students. Ms. Gigi is a third-year student at Laredo College, majoring in secondary education with a concentration in psychology. She is working toward becoming a psychology and sociology high school teacher. You've probably seen Gigi around campus, right? Mainly at the URI library where she's a student worker. Gigi is an active student leader on campus, participating in community service opportunities, and being a member of multiple student organizations. Gigi's academic and extracurricular endeavors have also been recognized by the West Texas A&amp;M University College of Organization. Ladies and gentlemen, the twenty-three, twenty-four ASO president, Ms. Alaman.
Good evening, everyone. I trust you are all well. I am Ana Quisela Pérez Alaman, the president of the student government, and it's a pleasure to be here. Allow me to present our recent activities and accomplishments. On October the fourteenth, we had office. It was a great student organization fundraiser. Clubs and organizations were able to fundraise by selling food and doing activities for the public. SGA promoted campus shield, campus shield use on both campuses. We were giving out the flyers for the campus shield app. We also promoted a Dia de Rio happening on October twenty-first. It was a partnership with the Environmental Center, and it is a community service opportunity to clear and clean the Paso del Lino Trail. We also had a promotion of the student satisfactory survey, where students can submit their proposals, questions, concerns, and complaints about our college. We also had our first meeting. It took place on Friday, September twenty-nine, from twelve thirty to one thirty PM. We had more candidates for office this year. We had twice as many as we did last election cycle. We saw an increase in voters by sixty-three percent, twenty, oh, sorry, two hundred and fifty-one last year and four hundred and one this year. I am happy to report we had a sizable audience for our first meeting. A special thank you to Fred Solis for attending to our first meeting. We will focus on getting the student body familiarized with the name, the student government, and straight away from using associate student organization. We had workshops. Our advisor provided out of our SGA officers with multiple workshops to prepare us for our... to prepare us for our positions in the student government. We focused on the small goal setting, LinkedIn profiles, professional attire, Robert's Rules of Order. We also received professional headshots that will be used on our emails, LinkedIn prof, profiles, and SGA website. We also had a Loteria, hosted by the Office of Student Life, and it was on both campuses. The September twenty-nine, I'm sorry, the September nineteenth in the South Campus and September twenty-first in Port MacIntyre's campus. This event handed out Laredo College swatch prizes, and this event helped us to promote college school spirit and cultural heritage. And I also want to mention, well, I, I want to apologize because I'm reading it, but my first language, language is Spanish, so I'm trying to do my best. And also, next time, I will try to do it talking to you all. And yes, thank you all for having me this evening. Your support is very appreciated as we strive for excellent and positive change within our school community. Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you, Gigi. Madam Chair, we'd like to take a picture with our new student government president, please. Gigi?
All right, thank you, Ms. Alaman, and congratulations on your election. Look forward to the future with your she-burned children. We look forward to your future, Ms. Alaman. Thank you very much. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number Eight, which is the Classified Staff Council Report. Mr. Sam Tovar.
Good evening. Good evening, Board of Trustees and President. President, Dr. Miniterminas, Ms. Lupita Sepeda, Administration, and Classified Staff. Before anything, thank you for lending me your attention. For the record, my name is Sam Tovar, and I'm here to first represent the Classified Staff Council, CSC for short. One of the questions, one of the questions I asked myself when taking up the role was, what can I do to help this organization grow professionally? That is why currently, we are working on a survey on how to improve and better employee participation here at Laredo College. With the help of this survey, we'll be able to see what are the barriers and opportunities to increase employee participation. It will be a great way to build a cultural caring and giving employees an opportunity to network. The first of these events was our participation at the Fall Fest this past Saturday. If you can please direct your attention to your monitors, I would like to share a quick PowerPoint of our booth. As a team, we sold soft drinks and playmate game cards, games with our visitors. We sold over, we had over three hundred visitors, sold over two hundred soft drinks. As you can see, we had a lot of participants during the arbor. We also sold candies. Yeah, we free candy too. On behalf of the Classified Staff Committee, thank you for watching.
Very nice, very nice, everybody. Thanks so much.
Great job.
Um, I would also like to take this time to thank the CSC Vice President for her great effort on the event. And I would also like to take this time to mention a couple of, a couple of people that actually helped us on our way in achieving our, um, first off, this is the second time, as you can see, I'm kind of nervous still, kind of nervous, but I would like to take this time, or actually, one of my new mentors, Mr. Ed Conlon, he showed me this new thing where I'd like to give out shout-outs to everybody who was actually very thankful. In that aspect, I would like to ask Mr. Conlon to stand up and be recognized. Thank you. Several other people I would like to mention here, Vice President from the CSC, David Juan Zepeda. These three people, well, these following three people, when asked, when I asked them for help, they were very kind and generous in offering their kind advice and helping me present to you the proper way. I'd like to thank Mr. Fred Solis. Uh, Ms. Jessica Trevino. And Mr. Carmelino Castillo. Thank you, and that is all.
Great job, great job. Thanks so much, Mr. Tovar. I very appreciate it. All right, we're gonna move on with Agenda Number Nine, which is gonna be the Consent Agenda. I would first like to call on Dr. Ramirez to do those two items.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
If I may, Board, we'd like to withdraw two items from the Consent Agenda, nine J and nine L at this moment. We need some further investigation, and we'd like to just withdraw both with your permission.
Diffirm?
Yes, we will just defer for another meeting.
Yeah.
Uh, Chair. Chair Organizer, Mr. Ronhead. I'd like to motion to approve nine items, nine A, nine B, nine C, nine D, nine E, nine F, nine G, nine H, nine I, nine K, nine M, and items J and L will be deferred.
I have a motion by Mr. Ronhead. We have a second by Ms. Yando and Ms. Vena. Any discussion? Chair hears none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. All right, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Ten, Discussion and Possible Action. Ten A, selection of an invest advisory services provider and delegate to the college president the authority to negotiate a contract and fees. Mr. Sepeda.
Good evening, Board, Dr. Ramirez. For the record, Sepeda, the Vice President of the Administration. For this next item, we are going to ask the Board to defer the item. We issued out a request for qualifications for investment advisory services. We received eleven proposals. We have eleven companies or firms that are interested in participating. However, we would like to request that the item be deferred to the November meeting so that we can allow for more time for the finance and audit committee. They will be doing the review of the qualifications. So at this point, we would like to defer the item to the November meeting.
Motion to defer. All right, we have a motion by Mr. Ronhead to defer item ten A.
Second.
There's a second by Ms. Yando. Any discussion? None heard. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair hears none. Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Vela. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number Eleven, Information Items, starting with eleven A, the Enrollment Report, Dr. Fred Solis and Ms. Jessica Trevino.
Dr. Solis wasn't able to be here tonight, so Ms. Trevino will do the presentation.
Good evening, members of the Board. Dr. Ramirez, Jessica Trevino, AP of Enrollment Management for the record. My presentation this evening is rather short. It is, in fact, an enrollment snapshot of where we are as of today. Beginning with a continuing education non-credit enrollment, we are doing a comparison of quarter one. As you can see, quarter one runs from September, October, and November. And as of today, we have a twenty-point thirty-five percent increase in enrollment for quarter one. And please note that we're just in October. We've still got a month to go. So definitely a big shout-out to Dean Cortez and her team at the Continuing Ed for continuing to increase that enrollment. The offerings for the highest enrollment standard at the Police Academy, the Historisked Material Transport, and the Substitute Teacher Training. So again, we see an increase in the Continuing Ed, and we still got a month to go with registration there for the first quarter.
Yay!
Wonderful. On the credit enrollment, on the credit enrollment, we are looking at Fall twenty-two three. As you can see, we are defining our terms, non-flex terms and flex terms. You've got the start and end dates of the dates there, but technically is whatever falls into the first eight weeks, and then whatever falls in the second eight weeks, what you'll see there. You can see that for the first eight weeks, we had nine thousand four hundred and eighty-one students enrolled. For this term, this eight weeks, we are looking at ten thousand two hundred and twenty-two students enrolled. So it is an increase. However, I am not comfortable just yet sharing with you a comparison of the actual percentage increase because we are pending census date for the flex term two, which is the second eight weeks, which will be on Monday. So after Monday, we can comfortably, I've already talked to Ms. Monday, we'll sit and make an actual comparison so you can see the percentage increase of the flex term two, or second eight weeks. But I do want to mention, we do have seven hundred and forty-one students uniquely registered for flex term two, which means the students did not start in August, but they're starting rather, they started this past Monday.
On that. Chair Organizer, Mr. Ronhead. Um, will you be providing those numbers once you have a solid, either next month or if we get a, via email on these?
Okay.
Uh, but you know, you could provide this once you have a set.
Definitely, yes. And it was a conversation again that I had just minutes before meeting with Ms. Monday. We said we weren't just quite comfortable yet because those numbers will still change because census date is on Monday, and then we have a couple of other terms that begin afterwards. So yes, definitely, we will send you something before the next week.
Take your time, but thank you so much.
No problem. And as you can see, again, it's not an official comparison, but from Fall twenty-two, the certified enrollment, we were looking at nine thousand three hundred and seventeen students. However, that does not include the flex term numbers of last year. So that was actually a big change that happened this particular year, where we are now reporting what we call our flex terms, our second eight weeks within the same semester. So that's why the comparison is not quite ready yet. Last year, we were reporting one way. This year, we're reporting a different way. So we've got to iron out those numbers.
And if I might add, that's because of the changes in what the coordinating board is doing, right? And how we're being funded and how all of that is happening. So these changes are happening in real time, and they may change again once we know what our new formula of funding for FY twenty-five will be. So remember, they're coming back with a different formula in the spring. So that may, that reporting may change still yet again. So that we're staying on top of that, but just an FYI.
So just a little screenshot of our drops for non-payment. We did run drops for non-payment. If you recall, last board meeting, we presented how many students we had dropped who had no payment for the first eight weeks. The, the numbers that you see here are for students for this eight weeks. We had a total of three hundred and nineteen students who were dropped. Three hundred and eleven were solely registered for the second eight weeks, and then we had a combination of eight weeks and four weeks, and then a seven-week student there. We were able to recover twenty-eight of those three hundred and nineteen students within the three-day late registration period. However, we did have a hundred and seventy-two students who made some type of schedule change within this three-day late registration period, which finished today. So we still saw a lot of movement of students adjusting courses based on their final grades from the first eight weeks to the second eight weeks. So we're very grateful to Dr. De Nina and her team over at Academics for being patient with us with this three-day late registration period. We are still seeing a lot of movement happening here. Just do want to note, a hundred and eighty-two students dropped in this eight-week period were actually also dropped from the first eight-week period, from the first eight-week terms. So that was a comparison that we wanted to do to see how many students that we had left enrolled from first eight weeks to second eight weeks. We were still going to lose regardless, and that was a total of a hundred and eighty-two from the two sixty-eight that we dropped initially back in August. So that's good data to have so that we can determine how our drop process will continue. If we will drop all enrolled courses, or we're going to continue to drop individual terms.
Chair Organizer, Dr. Ramirez.
Jess, do we know why those hundred and eighty-two dropped, or was it non-payment? Was it they weren't showing up? Was it they?
So these hundred and eighty-two are actually dropped for non-payment, which means that at this point, these hundred and eighty-two were dropped initially in August from the first eight-week classes. We worked the eight weeks to see they were coming to us. It ended up that they were not coming to us. They could be at another institution in higher education. We've already verified that information, or they're not going to take courses altogether in the fall. So they decided to drop their entire enrollment.
Those that are not registered anywhere else, are we keeping them in our?
Communication pipeline to get them back in the spring.
Yes, ma'am.
Good.
And then, last but not least, just a couple of days additional information. We are looking forward to opening registration Monday, November sixth. And again, for your calendars, December fifteen, twenty-twenty-three, our commencement ceremony is getting here faster than what we anticipated. Any questions?
Chair Organizer, Mr. Ronhead.
Thank you. I know that enrollment is a huge driver for, for the college. Please tell your, your staff and everybody here, because I know it's a team effort from everybody, that, you know, we, I mean, the numbers are looking great from where we're at. So tell all, tell your staff, because I know a lot of them, it's either clerical people that are calling or are doing all that. Tell your staff that we really do appreciate their hard work and everybody, because it's very important, because again, enrollment is a huge driver for us, you know? So just tell your staff that your numbers are looking really good.
Definitely. Thank you very much. I will relay the message.
Uh, one of the questions that I was asked was, those students that are dropping non-payment, what, what do we do with those students? Do we attempt to reach out to them? Do they have the ability to apply for scholarships, or is it just, so those students that just apply and just don't follow through?
Right. So it's a combination of all of the above, definitely. So as you can see, the initial drop list that we ran to keep track of these students was on October first, twenty-two-three. Back then, we had four hundred and thirty-one students who were potential drops at that moment. And I was just kind of in the middle of the, of the calling season so that we can make sure that we track if our calls are being fruitful, to make sure that we continue to keep the students in all of the efforts. So when we're calling the students, one of the, one of the directives has been that it's called a student with a holistic approach. Let's make sure we're reviewing not only their financial aid package. If they have not applied for financial aid, bring them in to apply. If they're missing one document in financial aid, don't just tell them that they're missing a document, actually help them complete the document on the spot. We continue to work with Dr. Ortiz in the scholarship universe to make sure that as we're getting funding that needs to be depleted immediately, we're offering to students as they're coming. So all of these students get a review of their package before being dropped. Right now, they're getting a phone call from the brochure's team, trying to collect payment, but offering them the opportunity for a payment plan as well. The Office of Financial Aid continues to extend emergency tuition loans. So it's an ongoing effort, again, team effort to try to keep them before we just drop them.
Thank you very much.
Chair Organizer, Mr. Ronhead. Uh, just, I don't know. I think I, you answered it, but I don't remember. Do we send off like text messages as well, or we do not? I'm just saying, because some students might not want to actually answer the phone, maybe via text. Do we, do we do that?
So we do have the texting capability. Right now is a one-way texting capability. We are working on a solution to do two-way texting because what we've seen- because what we've seen is students want an immediate response to the text message that we send. So right now, I I can tell you that we do not text these particular students, but that's where we're headed.
But what is it? Is it because we 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 don't have the system?
So it's partially because we don't have the system. We do have a system that has texting capabilities and we've used it on behalf of student life as well. They are the ones that are launching the text for us first. However, what we're also noticing is that some of these students are continuing students. So we have the wrong or outdated contact information for the students.
And we're not updating it on the on their profile?
Now we are. Yes. So what we're also going to be working with is to push out a massive update to all of our enrolled students so that we are able to, before they can access their class online, to update their contact information. So that's the goal. I can't tell you when, but that is what we're working towards because we do need to update information for all of our students that we have currently enrolled because we did get a lot of calls with wrong number. That's not my number. I recently changed the number.
I think that would help a lot. I I I mean, I think we've all seen it whenever we log on to either, you know, to pay to pay our bill or something like that. You know, it automatically pops up before it allows you to to move on. So I think it, you know, please update, click here to update your contact. I think that would help. And then also the the ability to be texting back and forth. I have done it. I have used it. It's very helpful sometimes because you're, I mean, there, I'm in a meeting or something and, you know, it's a lot easier for me or something like that. So I think, you know, we should look into something like that. Oh, sorry. We should look into something like that because I think it would be very beneficial for kids, especially because they're now very taxi, you know, sadly, so I think it would it would help a lot. So we could look into that. I think that would be great, you know, for to to expedite and have a huge quicker communication with with the students.
Definitely. So yes, it is something I don't mean to take Mr. Bella's smile off his face, but we have a series of products that we're looking at, not only for texting, but also to be in the student's social media, directed to the students on behalf of Laredo College is another option. And then a couple of of solutions that we're looking at.
Sure.
No, 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 not at all.
What about Google services like Google Voice or utilizing any of those services?
So we're actually calling from our direct extensions. That's actually something that we're trying to avoid. Trying to kind of bounce the call everywhere, which is an issue that we were having when our lines were masked going out. The student would call back and it'll call back to that one general operator. So we're actually working to unmask several of the enrollment management, if not all the lines. There really shouldn't be a reason why a student can't call us back directly so that when we're getting that call back or we're leaving a message, we get that response. So we're really pushing a lot with the one-on-one relationship to try to get these students to, not only to to pay, but any help that they may need throughout the process.
By the way, financial aid should not be masked either.
Yeah, no, we're working on removing the mask from all enrollments.
Well, thank you very much.
No, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your hard work and your efforts.
Yeah.
All right. Chair recognizes Dr. Ramirez.
Yes, sir. I'd like to go back to item five C, the Hispanic Association of Colleges and Universities. When I introduced our two candidates, Janam Montemayor was not in the room. He was in class and so he just got out of class and he recently joined us. So Janam, we talked about you already, but I want everybody to know who you are and so. And so I don't, can we take a photograph with them? Or is? Has she got down stuff here? No, she's gone. You can take it. Okay. All right. Why? No, so now we're now we're missing Julio. Okay. All right. Well, we can take a picture with it and we'll take one with Julio later if you want. Yes. All right. Janam?
Thank you, Dr. Ramirez. All right. Well, we'll continue on with the agenda of information items with eleven B gifts, donations, grants and endowment updates. Dr. Dian Ortiz.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, administration faculty, staff and guests. My name is Dr. Dian Ortiz and I'm the Vice President of Institutional Advancement. And with me here today is.
Governor of Silent Director of Grants.
So today we're going to give you just a little bit of a recap of some of the things that have been happening in the Institutional Advancement Division, which is made up of the grants, the donor, alumni and endowments. So one of the things that we're doing and working with Scholarship University, Brandon Diaz and Jessica Trevino, we are of course designating some funding that's available for, from our one-time donor designated accounts to students that may have needs. So this, from this quarter, from July through August, two hundred and nineteen thousand dollars were issued out and there were thirty-two donors, one-time donors that we have. So our goal as a donor team is to take those donors and use these tools and these opportunities that they've provided to students one time and to try to nurture that donor and create a recurring donor. Where if they gave a one-time donation of three hundred dollars or five hundred dollars or a thousand, that they might come back and become a recurring donor. So there are thirty-two donors that we are going to be reaching out to for these efforts. Another thing that we're doing and I'm reporting is I'm reporting two grants that we applied for. This was not reported at the last board meeting, but we did apply for the Dell Foundation Grant for four million dollars and there was a Gateway Rotary Grant for five thousand dollars. So that's a total of four million, five hundred, five thousand dollars. And right now we're waiting here to see if we get awarded. So we're really excited about that. These are actual grants that were either requested, awarded and some that were captured. So for quarter three, we have several different grants. Do you want to go over them again and kind of go over?
So the way we've been tracking these is just basically this basic spreadsheet. We also have some other forms or or templates that we use. But basically it's just to announce that if you go all the way to the right side where it says yes under grant award. Those are grants that have been awarded. One of the first ones is the one that was announced earlier by Dean Cortez. The second one was from P and C for the statue, which went on this morning, the private party. And then the third one was fifteen thousand dollars from the from H B for the Palomino pantry. And that one was, we just heard about that one last week and that one's coordinated by Carlos Lino Castillo. So the rest basically are, we're waiting. You know, some of these we've gotten before, some of them, we haven't gotten them recently, but they all look pretty good. And we're constantly looking for new ones so we can keep this this growing and and bring in as much money as possible.
Thank you. And if I could add, the A P Foundation, the fifty thousand dollars, I know that Dr. Ramirez had mentioned it last time that A P had agreed to provide us funding for our Fun Fest. Falcon Bank was very generous in providing us funding for the Fall Fest. This is for the upcoming Fun Fest and the commitment is for two years. Then Women's City Club, the General Studies and Education Grant, the Women's City Club of Camilo Prada, where they, we request monies for equipment. And then of course we have the Rio South Texas that was worked on through Continuing Ed. And then P and C Early Childhood. This was at the request of P and C. They have given us the opportunity to provide and ask for funding for the early childhood program, twenty-five thousand dollars and for the Camilo Prada to help the teachers maybe learn some strategies that are and might help the, what was it?
It's called brokerage.
Oh, yes. The growth rate, yes, right. And then of course, the Prairie Foundation. And then this, these are actual accounts that have happened through the donor office, the development office. The Laredo College Education Foundation did have some donor transfers. The A P Powerline Tech, which was thirty-five thousand dollars, South Texas Outreach. They did support two programs, the Bass Org and the B S N Program for twenty thousand dollars. And then of course, the D V H R Honors Program for a hundred and fifty thousand. Then some that you see below are donors or donations that have come in either for items like the bricks and tile. They did donate nine pallets of bricks to help us unveil and work on the Veterans Walkway. They were very, very generous with that and that was a five thousand dollar value. Tima Transport Cortez did donate a trailer to the Logistics and Transportation Team that they worked on completing and bringing in that donation. And then we had the Laredo College Education Foundation, which donated the eternal flame that you saw today at the P and C event. And Falcon Bank, the forty thousand dollars, fifteen this year for the Fall Fest, twenty-five thousand next year for the event. And then of course, the development donor projects that are currently being worked on alongside other departments, the Martin Home Inventory, which we're very close hopefully to completing. The report is due November first to the donor and we will be unveiling the some items in the very near future to our Laredo College family, to the public for opportunities of purchase. And then of course, we had the P and C unveiling today, the Fall Fest. We are working on donor outreach as we're working on auditing our files. We're using that opportunity since it is the end of the year to capitalize on some donors and maybe ask them if they're willing to give monies to their endowments or any of the accounts that they might have. We're working on the Blackbaud transitioning. And then of course, last but not least, some of you all have a packet like this. You have the golf classic information on your packet. And then I also included a P and C card that was given out today to showcase the video. If you were not able to attend today, the video of the event is there. Are there any questions? Know that the golf tournament is taking place on December the ninth. We just finished one event and now we're working to on on off to another. And we ask that if you all know of anybody that is interested in sponsoring a hole or being part of the the actual events, we just ask you to reach out to us and we'll be happy to help you out.
Awesome. Wonderful. Any questions from members of the board? All right. Thank you very much, Dr. Ortiz. All right. We'll move on to agenda item eleven C, Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board Open Education Resource. O E R Grant Update, Dr. Elizabeth Rodriguez and Mr. Porcach Mancingani.
Good evening, board members, Madam President, colleagues. Elizabeth Rodriguez, I'm the Dean of Academic Innovation and Technology and my colleague. So we're here to give you an update. We presented on the O E R Grant that we received a couple of months ago, but we wanted to give you an update of what we're, what we've been able to accomplish thus far. So some of the resources that we've been able to put together when we got this grant is to really expand some of the support services that we're offering to faculty as they redesign their courses. And so we've, through the Center of Teaching Excellence and Learning, we developed a brand new branch. It's being led by Professor Mancingani and our O E R team consists of one, one other faculty member, Michelle Perez, and then of one of our librarians, which is Omeria Areola, and one of our instructional designers, Beatriz Flores Martinez. These two staff members are already staff members of some of our other departments, but they're they're crucial to the redesign of courses. So what what have we done with the grant money? So we were awarded twenty-five thousand dollars and with that grant money, we were able to redesign one of the courses, which is the Government twenty-three oh five. When we initially applied for the grant, we speculated that we would be applying this design to ten sections. It turns out that we've been able to expand to thirty-nine sections. And so when you look at that as a cost saving for our students, we've already been able to save our students forty-seven thousand dollars. And this is only for the first eight weeks for those thirty-nine sections in its one course, the redesign of one course. The redesign of this course has represented a fundamental paradigm shift where students are now working on producing projects rather than the traditional multiple choice exams. And students are actually learning real world skills. They're creating podcasts, they're creating legislative profiles, they're creating legislative proposals. And so they're really engaging in the in the course content as opposed to just memorizing things. Some of the things that when we look at O E R and what the goals are with O E R, some of the important factors that we're looking at is, is first of all, we're removing the barriers, right? Because some of the barriers that we see, that we have seen is that students oftentimes cannot afford a textbook and so they'll drop their class. The other thing that we that we are promoting a sense of belonging, right? Because when faculty are able to redesign their courses using open educational resources, it allows them an opportunity to to infuse information about our own culture. And so students can engage and can identify better with the with the with the course content. The other thing we're doing is promoting access. Right now students have access to the content, to the textbook for free. They don't have to pay anything. And so the access to to the textbook and to the resources of the course is readily available for the students. And then of course, we're improving student success. And you know, this is not just what we say here at Laredo College, but this has been backed up with research.
Good evening again, Professor Mancingani for the record. I just wanted to comment one more on where she talked about our Dean Rodriguez about improving student access. With these open educational resources and being frank, we're essentially talking about free textbooks. And where she mentioned improving student access, it has been incredible. You know, we've had so many semesters where publishers have informed us of not being able to print enough books on time. And so at the bookstore, there isn't enough books available. We've had issues where the high school may not have been able to allocate the resources on time for the correct book. And so now you have. Um, allocate the resources on time for the correct book, and so now you have thousands of students or hundreds of students without the textbook. Moving over to open educational resources is moving that publisher, the middleman, the middle people out of the way and saying, we are content experts. What are we waiting for? And this allows students to access the book the minute they get into the course. Through a quick PDF, through a quick click in their phone, it's revolutionary. When I was creating my syllabus, I know I was talking to Dr. Rodriguez and Dr. Ramírez and Dr. De Hidina about. How I was able to put a link in my syllabus to the book itself, and it felt so freeing to be able to. Give that content to our students, and it's at the same quality that we've been providing for many years. Which is what I want to talk about very briefly here, about these open educational resources. One of the things that we've seen is that the high cost of textbook, which I'll show you in just a moment. Has in fact shown in time after time after time, and I know probably all of us in this room have experienced it at some point in our academic careers. Is that it has had an adverse effect on the student outcomes. Several reports have shown that students would just refuse to purchase a textbook for their classes due to cost, which can negatively impact their grade. Dropping that course when they find out what the cost of the textbook is, or the fact that they couldn't move forward without the book. They've also reported taking different courses that have cheaper textbooks to avoid worrying about those courses that are expensive, which is. Which has in fact impacted their completion rates, which as Dr. Ramírez has stated many times, in the new funding model, we really need to keep an eye. On students being able to complete their degree within a certain timeframe, this is something that the coordinating board has been very adamant about. Um, and also, the cost of textbooks continues to negatively impact student success. Student success rates and completion rates in a number of different studies, which is what we're talking about. The other bit of the data that I wanted to present to you about these three textbooks, because as a faculty member, when I first approached open educational resources. I was very skeptical, because I would look at it and I would say, wow, this isn't what I'm used to, this isn't what the publishers would create, and I'll come back to that in just a second. But as you can see here, and I won't get into the details of it, but there are two studies that I brought forward to you all today. One of them was through the Open Educational Groups Review Project, and the other one is a study done um, in Florida. And then the first study shows that. Student retention and outcomes measured by the grades on exams and final course grades. Involving over a hundred thousand students showed that ninety-five percent of students were doing just as well or better when using O E R. And the research is conclusive, if you continue to look into there, there are no marketable or market noticeable differences between using O E R. And using publisher content, so the fact that we're charging these students this money, when the research shows that you can be just as successful without that publisher. Cost is seen in study after study. And I do want to take a quick second to show you what the high cost of textbooks looks like. And I know it's kind of like, okay, you're looking at L C, but these are some books from L C. And I just wanted to take a moment, on the top left, you have a book from college physics, that is over a hundred and six dollars. But although that one, you'd have a textbook for, if I'm not mistaken, Computer Sciences, which is over a hundred and fifty dollars, the rebel. On the top right, you have another textbook, which is Inquiry Into Life, over uh, two hundred dollars. And at the very bottom right, you have another one, which is for arts, music appreciation, if I'm not mistaken. May have them a little, but at any rate, yeah, art forms, that's music appreciation or art appreciation, and that one's a hundred and thirteen dollars. And I can tell you right now that I know colleagues across the nation and colleagues across the state that are using the same. Other material for the same courses at no cost to the student. These are the high costs, not just for one book. Out of six or seven, or four or five, depending on how many students the ta- student is taking in one semester. Imagine two semesters plus the summer, plus the winter semester. This really begins to defeat your funds and starts to cut into your graduation rates and completion rates. Look at what free books look like. These are two books that we're using on campus here, uh, one in government, one in history, and when the student goes to the L C bookstore. It will show them this message, this is literally the two messages you'll see depending on what the instructor is using. If there's a cost, they'll see this message, if there's no cost, they'll see this message, which says, free open educational resources are required, please see your instructor. So there's no additional cost for any material in that course, and it saves them an incredible amount of money. And this is what it looks like to place students first, because, and I'll say this before I move on. When you look at who creates these materials, right, let's be straightforward here, right? Publisher, O E R. If we look at who created the content, it's going to be the same person, it's going to be a faculty member at some institution, mark my words. The difference is who's getting paid and who isn't getting paid. That's really what it comes down to, and sometimes, and this is what I'll get into in the next slide, which is the last. You see what I had, which was that skepticism of open educational resources, what's not in there? Why I don't see the presidential requirements or the equation for this particular mathematical concept? I told this to someone at a summit in Boston a summer or so ago, and I know I've shared this with you all before, and you know what they told me? Exactly, why don't you add it yourself? This is a free open C C license, you're allowed to just convert it to Word and put it in that, and I said, I stopped and said, well, I am the expert. That's what I was hired to do, nobody's there to stop me, in fact, it allows me to take back the content. And say, let me start to tell those stories that the publishers are not having, because they're creating one book for. Thousands of students and not millions of students, to be honest, which brings me to the final area that I want to talk about. This is incredibly important to me. This shift to open educational resources, mark my words, represents the biggest. The biggest push towards academic freedom that we've ever had, what did I say a moment ago? Put it in there, you're the content expert. When using open educational resources, yes, the publisher is gone, yes, that resource and support is gone, but what's left is an expert. And when you look at the contractor faculty, it says that you need to be someone who can create content, who can uh. Who can create curriculum and so forth. So when we become, when we begin using open educational resources, we truly become the content masters of our field. Because there's nothing to stop me from bringing in new material into that book. And saying, you know what, I'm not waiting for the publisher to release the second edition, which is going to be three hundred dollars more, the third edition of the fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth, ninth. The heck with the additions. Document, convert it to a Word document, type in there what you need to put in there, and there are ways to control the quality of that by having. A committee within the department, there are just different ways that you can do that instead of saying, let me get a professor who's partnered up with Sangage. Who's getting X amount of dollars, and the publishers are scared. But the reality is the students need to be placed first, and we are content experts, we don't need to run to anybody to tell us what is. Political science, or what is history, or what happened in World War One, we've known it from the beginning and we were hired because we know those things. There's no question about it, some of you all have taught or taking classes here and know this for your, for yourselves, obviously, all of you know this. With any mode of freedom comes responsibility. When the publishers cut out and the faculty becomes the master, when the faculty has the freedom. To create and direct the content as they wish. Never has there ever been more responsibility in the hands of a faculty member, now you truly get to navigate what happens in your classroom. Not a publisher saying, just teach all this, now it's in your hands, and it's scary. To have that much power and responsibility, but that is what academic freedom is. Academic freedom isn't the right to say, I'm going to use this book, and the students are going to have to pay a hundred and fifty dollars, academic freedom is. I get to decide what the content is. Right, what the students get to learn, under certain paradigms, under certain objectives, because our. Responsibility to our students are set forth by the coordinating, they give us four, five, seven course objectives, learning outcomes. Our responsibility is make sure that at the end of the semester, these seven, these eight, we are confident that the students learn those. To teach a student how to understand the difference between the three branches, I don't need a publisher for that. Why can't I explain the, the difference between the congressional, the executive, and the legislative, beginning with who makes the laws and who enforces them and who interprets them? I'm a master of my content, why do I need a publisher who's really only in it for the money? And they fed us the poison for many years, they are the publishers, to think we need them, but we don't need them. And now tell them to their face, because this is about taking back education and putting it in the hands of the matters of the content. It was always in our hands, we sold it to them, right? With academic freedom that O E R grants, faculty will be able to dive back into their content, be able to. Interact with their content in a way that they haven't for a while, because what the publishers have kind of taken that, right, they've given us. They've given us PowerPoints, they've given us books, they've given us assignments, they've given us study guides, this way we get to interact with our material. We become the experts again, and we've always been the experts, now we get to exercise that piece. We fill in the gaps, this is something very important to me, when you look at history and you look at government, the general narratives don't tell the story. Of what happened in Addo, they don't tell the story about, you know, when you go to, now this is unwrapped. When you go to the history books that are used by most institutions, they don't tell the story of how, yes, they do about African Americans and how they face discrimination in the deep south. They need to tell that narrative, it's a very important story, part and parcel of our experiences as Americans. But they don't talk about how Mexican Americans face those same kinds of discrimination, and not necessarily far away from here, but as far as closest as Crystal City, Texas. Or three rivers, Texas, or you know, we can go on, dr. school taxes and students who were left behind there. We can put this into the narrative now, not wait for the publisher to control that narrative. And then of course, I don't think we've had this kind of academic freedom in a long time, we sold it off to the publishers. Again, O E R is about taking back that. That responsibility, controlling that narrative, being free to add to the content that has been omitted, I know faculty across the nation that bring in students. To help them write books, that's, that's like O E R point two. Needless to say, the sky is the limit, the students can even begin to one day be part of their, uh, a part of their content and curriculum. That's the overall goal, and it makes the students far more interested, and I'll say one last thing, with this, I have abandoned tests. And exams and multiple choice, you know what I've done, I said, you're going to create like Dr. Rodriguez had mentioned. A proposal for a law, a profile of a politician so that you learn how to create a resume, so that will come to help you when you learn politics, you see. Two birds with one stone, the sky is the limit, and they created a podcast, I got chills by listening to them. Because now they're creating content themselves, you're unlocking their potential, and they will surprise you with how incredible they are. So again, in conclusion, O E R is about freeing the faculty, freeing the student, and being able to say, we can control the narrative, we don't need to pay for information. We just don't, so, thank you.
Question, uh, what percentage of, I guess, the courses that are taught here at Laredo College are utilizing O E R?
We don't, I, I personally don't have a percentage.
We do have.
Oh, we do, I.
So I don't have it either, but if Dr. Ramírez wants to jump in, but we are, there's a lot of um, departments already using O E R, the English Department's fully all, 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 O E R. Kinesiology is also doing completely O E R. The math is going to be ready to, well, for spring twenty twenty-three, all of our courses being offered for dual enrollment should be O E R. With a goal, with a final goal, being that in fall of twenty twenty-four, all of the courses at Laredo College will be O E R. Of course, with some exceptions, right, because there's some areas like the nursing that we're still looking for um. And I know T H C, we just came out with a nursing textbook and they just launched that, so there's going to be exceptions, but the, the. If you can't find O E R, the message that we're sending through our faculty handbook and other resources is that. It has to be low cost, with the anticipation that you're going to move towards O E R at some point. Um, so we are also doing a survey, and Dr. De Hidina wants to jump in.
And you answered my second question as far as when will we be at least close to a hundred percent O E R, which, I mean, fall of twenty twenty-four is an amazing.
Manita Rodriguez, De Hidina, for was Vice President of Academic Affairs. The goal is for fall of twenty twenty-four, all academic courses, I know it's a big goal, um, but I know that the departments. Well, because the way I see it is, it's not fair to implement it on dual, and why not our own students that are, you know, here. Our own, you know, so, um, I know workforce is working really hard on creating um, their own manuals as well. I think the goal is that. I think with the faculty, the misconception is there's no resources available. Um, but we have under the center of teaching excellence and learning, we have a group of faculty that are going to each of these departments. And basically educating them because the resources are there, they just don't know how to obtain it, and I know Cash every week. Uh, or Porcach, since we're in public, um, he sends a weekly update on different resources, there are so many repositories out there. So I think it's just not knowing what's available out there or how to obtain them, but we have a team that leads. In how to, how to start implementing it.
And, and I.
Sure, go ahead.
And if I may add, I, I think this is um, as, as we've mentioned, this is the future in textbooks. Whether our, I mean, the idea is how do we support faculty through the process? So that they understand how to use these, these resources effectively, it's not going to be an option eventually, so. You know, if you give them the option to create it themselves and, and buy into it. And we're giving them time to do that, it's, it's better for them because they create it at the way they want it, right, they, they adjust their classes. The only thing we have to do is we have to meet all of the learning objectives. And so, for example, in, in, if all the government classes have to be using the same. All the English classes have to be using the same O E Rs, because at the end of the day, if a student. Has to transfer from one class to another, for whatever reason, we don't want the student to lose out, they have to be using the same text. And at the end of the day, how we teach as educators may be a little bit different. How we deliver the message may be different, but the content and the, and the textbook will be the same, and the goal is. By January, all dual credit courses will all be on O E Rs, and that's to eliminate the cost on all dual credit students, which means all core curriculum. Should be on dual, I mean, should be on O E Rs, and that'll help our students as well. By fall of twenty-four, all of our courses should be on O E Rs. So that's the goal, that's the challenge they've been given, and this team is working really diligently with the, with the faculty to make it happen, so.
And if I may, I think the opportunity here with the four week and the eight week models and now O E R is that. It gives the opportunity for faculty to keep redesigning, with today's different type of learning, it's all about trying to master. The balance between, you know, teaching and learning, so, and it, and it keeps evolving so much, you know, with A I, we just had a meeting with Google. Things are just, I mean, I'm blown away with just everything that keeps happening, so we keep rollovering. Roll overing our courses of what we taught ten, fifteen years ago, it's not going to cater to our, our students today. You know, it, it's, it's, and that goes, it's not about age, I mean, even us. And, and older generations, you know, we're getting so used to our technologies and what, what opportunities we get, so. I definitely agree with Cash that this is um, an opportunity of academic freedom to keep redesigning the courses.
Dr. De Hidina, and what's your perspective of staff, because I know sometimes you have staff that. They're want to keep their, their curriculum and don't touch it, like, do you foresee that we might have some pushback? I, I mean, I, I, I understand that, but I mean.
Yeah, I think there's always pushback, but my, my thing with, with a small number of, of faculty, right, or staff. I think the misconception, like I said earlier, is that they don't bring awareness to their own content, you know, and I think. So to me, my, my thing is always com- complain to me when you've already played with it, when you've done your research. And, you know, but don't complain out of the unknown.
Yeah, and, and, and I like what Mr. Mancen Hani said, that, you know, you have. I mean, like, you, you transfer over to your PowerPoint or a doc, and like you said, you know, if there's an item or there's a particular. Um, set of, of, of maybe, you know, curriculum that you want to have, you're the expert at it. You know, or, or, or maybe at the same time delete whatever you might feel that, you know what, this is too repetitive, it's, it's covered over here. You know, you could, you could play around with it, so I just, I just think that it will be a lot easier and simpler for the professor. And I also like the fact that what you mentioned, uh, Cash, that um. You give an exam on, create me a, what you feel is, is, could be the next, you know. Curriculum for the, uh, for the upcoming class, because the students might be able to say. I think this will be able to help us a lot more, and I mean, they're going to be out, it's for the next gen, for the next class that's coming up, and I think that's a great. Um, way to actually interact with the students, so they could give you their perspective of what they feel is, is important and important. So they could give you their perspective of what they feel is, is important and important. Then the professor would, would change things around that they might feel. So that's great. I mean, this is.
And so am I, you know, talk, talking to the mic. Are the terms of the fifty thousand dollars that we saved with that twenty-five thousand dollar grant? And I just wanted to say, one of the things that it requires us to do, which we've never done before in this matter, is to hire, bring on student reviewers internally and externally to review the course after it's been created and provide feedback that must be reported later. How we took that feedback and incorporated it. And it's quite a paradigm shift. The other thing I just wanted to say, because I'd be remiss if we didn't. This team along with, uh, Dr. Domeno, Dr. Domeno recently met too, to move the needle forward on creating the reporting system that the state requires us to do. So that when a student is signing up for a class, it'll tell them when the book is free.
Yeah.
It's called the course marketing and, and. And we've made some great progress.
And honestly, this is a great thing for students that won't have to actually purchase a hundred, a two hundred dollar or maybe two hundred and fifty dollar book. So this is great. Now, last question I have on the dual. Are, uh, I'm wondering, are, are the school districts okay with, with this on?
Of course, both, both big school districts that we work with said they were saving anywhere from eight hundred thousand to almost a million dollars of books. Books are very costly.
Yeah.
Um, so when you start adding up, I mean, and part of House Bill eight does enforce us to offer open educational resources, especially with the school district.
That's cool. Congratulations.
Very good.
This is real good.
Okay, we can go home now.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you all very much. Thank you.
Great job.
All right, we'll move on to agenda item eleven D, foreign trade zone designation request, Dr. Domeno.
Yes, sir. Um, just to, uh, just to advise you all as, as per our last meeting, uh, these requests are now, um, being done out of the president's office and just wanted to advise you that we received a, 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 a new request or, or an amended request from, uh, one we had already approved in the past. And so, um, I just wanted to bring it to your attention, it is in your packet. Uh, it did come from, uh, the, uh, company called Bordinadora Incorporated located at one oh two Roscalade Road. Um, and so it's an additional thirty-eight hundred square feet that, um, has been approved. And so in your packet is also a letter, the letter that I sent them, uh, and the request that they sent us through the airport. Uh, who's the airport director, who's in charge of these requests?
Wonderful. Any questions for members of the board?
No, sir.
All right. We'll move on to agenda item number twelve, executive session. Twelve A, raise Laredo College exempt staff member level three grievance hearing as per board policy. DGVA local arising from consolidation of complaints, appeal and investigation conducted under board policy. DIAB local and complaint under board policy. DIAA local, closed session pursuant to Texas government code. Sections five five one dot zero seven one and five five one dot zero seven four. Twelve B, reads personal matter involving the termination of at will Laredo College employees. Closed session pursuant to Texas government code sections five five one dot zero seven one and five five one dot zero seven four.
Motion to go to executive session.
I have a motion by Minister Ronhead, we have a second by Minister, any discussion? None heard, all those in favor? Any opposed? Unheard, motion passes. Uh, at this time, it is seven fifty P M and the board will adjourn to executive session pursuant to sections five five one dot zero seven one and five five one dot zero seven four of the Texas government code to discuss agenda item twelve. Thank you.
Man, I'm not gonna take too long right?
No, no, I just wanna share. A couple of things.
Ah.
We didn't talk for that half. Ooh, you're a big mom.
Nobody left.
Five zero.
God. Oh.
You gotta have some have right?
No. Why didn't you tell me?
Yeah.
Can you announce the score please sir?
I don't get it. Remember Robert's rules of course on the agenda. So I'm not allowed to.
Oh, the other day after I was like totally. Like, oh no, this is gonna be. I mean here, okay, go. Oh, no, this is gonna be okay, here, go.
Thank you. All right, we have reconvened from closed session, time is now eight twenty six P M and the board took no action in executive session. We'll take appropriate action on items if necessary as discussed in post session. Um, as per the agenda, we'll move on to item thirteen, discussion and possible action. Thirteen A, Laredo College Exam Staff Member Level Three Agreement, Asper Board Policy D G B A Local. Rising from consolidation of complaints, appeal of investigation conducted under Board Policy. D I A V Local and complete under Board Policy D I A A Local, uh, and no action will be taken. All right, we'll move on to agenda item number fourteen, President's Remarks. Fourteen A, Campus Police Personnel and Travel Reports, Doctor Mita Ramirez.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair, we just, um. In your packets, we did give you a report on, on all of the campus police happening, uh, for, for this month. Uh, you have the September report in your, in your packets, um. There's been, you know, a lot of activity going on right now, um, where I'm happy to announce that our. Uh, Chief of Police who's here, Mr. Hernandez, if you all have any questions about any of the activity that's been going on. Has been handled with, with great care and, um. We did have one arrest, um, but it was not a student, happy to report, so it was, uh. It was a, an outside thing that, that they assisted on it, so it was, uh. Uh, a, a good thing, we, we have been finding lots of. Items, uh, left around campus, which only means that we have more students on campus. So, uh, we do have now a system for lost and found. Items on campus as well, so students can go to PD and try to recover lost items that they find as well. So, if you have any questions, please let me know. Uh, anyone?
No.
I, I have.
Chair organizes Ms. Bella.
Not, I mean, just a comment.
Oh, no, no, on the police report.
Oh, no, 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 nothing like that.
Um, we also, um, travel report, I was this week, um. On Sunday, I was a keynote for the Texas Association of College and University Student. Um, Professionals Personnel Association, and, um, it was in El Paso. Hosted by the University of, um. Texas at El Paso and the El Paso Community College, and it was, uh, it was a wonderful event, um. I have to say that I was very humbled by the, by the invitation to keynote for this event, it's an organization. That I used to belong to, uh, as a student affairs personnel. And enrollment manager, and so, uh, it was very nice of them to, to ask me to, to be back, and so that's all the travel I've done recently. Um, just as a reminder, uh, I, I will be, um. Out, starting on Friday, and I'll be back, uh, on campus on the first. And so, uh, I appreciate the opportunity for, uh, a, a week of time off, and so thank you all very, very much after fifteen months. So, thank you for that, uh, so for travel, that's, um, we do have a lot of, uh. Activity going on as far as faculty travel, student travel, you, you've met some of the folks that are going on travel. Uh, and others that have already been, uh, we have, uh, students that are planning to go to conferences. And to trainings, um, all over the country, and so we're very excited about the opportunities that we're, we're trying to encourage students to. To actually focus on and, and take advantage of. Uh, thanks to their, their faculty sponsors and to their, their staff sponsors who are willing to take students on these trips. Um, we're hoping in the near future, hopefully by next year, to start an, uh, a study abroad program for our students. Uh, either partnering with some of our, uh. University partners or doing them ourselves, and so there are several faculty members who have approached me. With the idea of doing actually a study abroad program where students can actually get credit for a course. And, and do it abroad, and so we're looking at some options for that to give students that opportunity as well. And so, uh, for travel, um, that's, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move on to, uh, to that, fourteen B, President's remarks.
So, um, as a reminder to everyone, she asked me to remind everybody, uh, especially on our board, if. You have not signed yourself up for Campus Shield yet, if you haven't turned it on, if you haven't checked it this month. Remember that it, it will go dormant if you don't open it up every now and then. So, please make sure that you download Campus Shield, it's an app, um, and that, uh. That way you will know if there's an emergency on campus or something's happening, you will be notified immediately. Uh, through Campus Shield, if, in case I, I don't get to you right away, uh, for whatever reason, and, um. But ideally, you're, you're a part of that and updates will be going, go out through that. And so I encourage you to do that, and I encourage all the college, uh, students, faculty and staff to do the same who haven't yet done that. Uh, I did mention the free trade, uh, also, uh, this week, uh. The Association of Logistics and Forwarding Agencies, Agents, better known as Alpha. Recognize Laredo College, and I have the plaque here with me, recognize Laredo College for a twenty year partnership. Uh, the, they had a little ceremony at their new office here on our campus, um. Vicente Eduardo Garza was, uh, chaired the event, and they were very gracious in. Uh, giving us this award, and also they gave me an award, uh, for the partnership and for the opportunity to. To lease from us and to be on campus and partner with our program, and so they're very excited about the opportunities to come, um. Those of you that were here this morning for our P N C rededication of the monuments, thank you all for your help and your support. I want to thank the staff that was here this morning that made that event so special, um, I know that all of the veterans that were present, uh. Were overwhelmed with, um, with what we did, what we were able to accomplish thanks to the generosity of, of. P N C and, um, its president, uh, Susana Valencia, who's been an amazing friend to Laredo College, and so. Uh, we're very, very grateful to, to their generosity, and if you haven't driven by. On the south side, please drive by this evening, you'll be able to really appreciate the eternal flame. Uh, we are going to continue a, a program that goes with that project, which is the selling of bricks. Um, whose names we hope will commemorate, commemorate or memorialize the lives and service of veterans. So, if you're interested in purchasing a brick, uh, and, um. To be put on, either on the eternal flame or in the flag, where we have all of the flags in that area. We see Dr. Diana Ortiz, because I think they're gonna cost a hundred dollars. And so, we'll, we'll, at the next meeting, we'll provide you with, with that information and certainly invite the public to. To take part in that as well, and so, uh, we're looking forward to that. Uh, and last but not least, uh, just to let you all know, Doctor, um, David Ariasola and his team. Have submitted our emergency operations plan to the Texas State Emergency Center as required by law. Uh, we finished up the last little details today, right Dave? And we submitted it, uh, on time, it wasn't due till tomorrow, but, but it's done, um, and so, um. We'll keep you informed if there are any changes or updates to that. They are hosting a training, um, I think later this month. That both, uh, Doctor Dave and Chief are going to, and so is Cassandra, is it this month or next month? The training at Texas, the Texas, um, Emergency Center. The one I sent you, Chief, no, next month? I, I think it's next month, and so hopefully we'll, we'll be attending the training for that as well, so. And with that, if you have, uh, no questions, I'm done. Does, does the calendar of events that, that we have left, uh, reminder, we have. Several, uh, things coming up, so please check your calendars, we have our Thanksgiving luncheons next month with our employees, you're all are welcome to join us. Uh, and, uh, our regular board meeting next month will be on November the sixteenth. And then in December, we have our golf tournament and graduation, so please plan on joining us or not.
Well, you're out of town, who is?
As signature, Doctor Marisela.
Well, and their respective areas as well, like their decision making, but if it's a finance thing, it'll go through Mr. Bella. Uh, if it's an administrative decision that needs to be made, they'll either contact Mr. Bella or they'll, or Doctor Marisela.
Um, chair organizes Ms. Bella.
I don't know if, I guess I can call it a concern, the mental health.
Can you speak into the mic now?
Yeah, please, they would go. The mental health, I'm really concerned because I've heard of lots and lots of students. Not only here, but even in our high schools, et cetera, that are really having awful issues. With, um, mental health, you know, anxiety, depression, and I don't know if. We offer any services through our counseling center because it's, it's really, really needed. I mean, I, I just, I have friends that have told me instances where they've taken it upon themselves to go get help for. Students and, and, you know, we should have somebody, and if we don't have somebody. We should at least train one or two of our counselors on what do you do, how do you treat these people? You know, because it's not, it's something that can be controlled, well, definitely, but. It's sad, it's everywhere, even in the elementaries, it's, it's just really, really bad. And it's scary.
It is, so if I may, uh. We do have a counseling center, um. We recently had an external evaluator come in and do an assessment of our counseling center. There are some major things we need to take care of and fix. Um, ideally, we would have at least three more L P Cs on staff. Uh, we need to have at least one full-time L P C at the south campus, uh, but you're right. The levels of anxiety are hindering by, I'm just, and. At, at no, at no one's fault, it's just a byproduct of the society that we're living in today, um. Having had, I mean, I've, my child, when he was young, had severe anxiety, and so it, had we not dealt with it when we did. I, I don't think he'd be the productive citizen that he is today, and so, uh. But I will tell you that the counselors at the university. Helped them a great deal, they were the ones that identified it for him, and so my concern, uh, is. Making sure that the staff we do have is trained, but more importantly. That we're able to expand our services and offer our students the kind of help they need when they need it. And we can no longer be a referral station, no, because, um. Where do you refer them to?
That's right.
In Laredo, Texas, I think there are maybe one, there's one psychiatrist. I mean, there really isn't, and, and really good psychologists, I think we have two. And they're trying to get an appointment. Uh, you can't, so you send them to pillar, or you send them to border region, or you, and then. So they evaluate them and they say they're not a threat to self or others, and they let them go, and that's, and that's not enough. And, uh, it's not, and so, we have to take that into our own hands, the other thing we need to remember is that most of our students don't have insurance. And so getting that kind of help is expensive. And so, we have to make sure that as an institution, uh, and looking at, at this holistically. We have to, we are gonna have to provide those services to our students.
And maybe look for some sort of training, right? And not, but not only, you know, not only counselors, even faculty. Because what do you do if a student has an anxiety attack right in front of you, I mean, how do you handle this? And, I mean, it's bad.
And there is training to go with that.
You know, I mean, that, but this past week, couple of weeks, two kids, two girls. One in A and M and the other at U T, killed themselves, they jumped out a window, you know why?
Because of the rest, they, they, they can't, they don't know how to cope.
Exactly, and there's like. Just having training, maybe, I don't know, entering convocation or something, what do, what, how do you? Help control that, yes.
I'm gonna, well. If it's okay, I'm gonna ask if you see that item on certain agenda.
Correct.
That we discuss that in a later meeting.
Yeah, we can, we can, we can, November, yeah, we'll be happy to do that.
I wanted the conversation to continue because I think it's a very important topic.
It's extremely important.
I have wide eyes, they're getting wider over there.
No, but I, but it's just, it's extremely important, and people don't, aren't giving it the importance. And the attention that it needs, and we have many students that are affected by that.
And so.
Yeah.
So we can put that for the agenda for the next meeting.
Sure, thank you, and we'll give an update on what we do for employees and what we do for students.
Thank you, Doctor Ramirez, thank you, Ms. Bella. All right, we'll move on to agenda item number fifteen, which is the next meeting date, uh, and upcoming events. Uh, we have Monday, October thirtieth, twenty twenty-three at four P M, the College of Health and Sciences Open House. Uh, Wednesday, November the fifteenth, twenty twenty-three at twelve P M, we have the L C Employees Thanksgiving Luncheon at Fort McIntosh Campus. And on Thursday, November sixteen, twenty twenty-three at twelve P M, the Laredo College Employees Thanksgiving Luncheon at South Campus. Thursday, November sixteen, twenty twenty-three at six P M, regular board meeting, regular board trustees meeting. And November twentieth to twenty-four, twenty twenty-three, we have Thanksgiving holidays. Any questions? All right, uh, we have a motion, we have a second.
I do.
All, all those, everybody signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, meeting adjourned, thank you, everyone. And the score is five to two, asterisk.
Yay!
I don't watch those things.